Next item, please.
Action items. Are there any agenda items on this agenda which board members or the superintendent wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the motions below.
Trustee Moses.
I would like to exclude number 21 and 22 for a separate roll call. I have, as well as number eight, and I have a question on 19.
So pulled eight, 21, and 22. Is that correct?
Correct.
And you had a question on?
19.
19.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Trustee Thor.
I had questions, but I don't need the items pulled. Action item three and also 19.
Okay. Anyone else? Oh, yes. We have to call for another meeting extension.
I call for an extension.
Support.
Of this meeting.
Trustee Moses, trustee Thor.
Roll call. Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Dambrojo?
Yes.
Trustee Moses?
Yes.
Trustee Petrikov?
Yes.
Trustee Thor?
Yes.
Trustee Watts?
Yes.
President McDonald?
Yes.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is we're going to pull 18, 21, and 22, correct?
No, eight.
Eight, I'm sorry, eight, eight. All right. So move that action items, number one through 20 be approved as recommended in this agenda with the exception of eight, 21, and 22. Did I say that correctly? Yeah.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
Some.
Support.
Oh, support.
Okay. I'm sorry. Who made the motion? Okay. Motion by trustee Thor, supported by trustee Barry.
Where do you want to start with questions?
We will start with the, yes, start with the questions on number eight, I believe. No, number three. Was that reading?
Yeah.
Three and 19. Yes.
The question for number three was, when you look at the breakdown of cost for this item, camp invention, it's costing different amounts at the different schools, and I was curious as to why.
Camp invention, once again, is the choice for some of the summer programming for several of our elementary schools, as it was last year. We have four schools that are choosing camp invention, and those schools have different numbers of students totally based on the building team's plan for their students. So that helps to determine what the cost is. There are also three different models, and those models are explore 2022, that's $95 a student, elevate 20, which is $90 a student. That uses modules from 2020, and elevate partial. And there are different levels of programming, and that contributes to the different amounts that schools have decided to pay. So they work directly with camp invention to plan their program.
Okay. Thank you.
I also had a question on three.
Yes, please.
So it says here, four schools have been selected. Did every school have the opportunity?
Every elementary school had the opportunity to do it, and these are the four that chose to do it.
The follow-up question is probably to Mr. Wall here. Funding would be from SIR3 and general fund unit budget. Do we have the percentage breakdown, what that looks like?
Each elementary school, and actually middle school and high school, got $75 per student. So as Dr. Chokol alluded to, that if they wanted a larger, more included program, it might go over that $75, and they pay out of their unit budget.
Thank you very much.
On question number eight?
You had a question on number?
Yeah. So on this question?
I'm sorry. Are we eight or, because didn't we pull eight?
No, eight was pulled. 19, I think, was the question.
Oh, 19, sorry, yeah. The bus, is this the bus contract, right?
No. 19 was school of choice.
I had a question on eight too, but it's okay.
We've got to wait.
Yeah, I know. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. We're going to come back. Sorry, I got confused. It's been a long night. All right. So question on school of choice, correct?
Yes.
So I just want to make sure that we're doing close of choice for excluding the school, the virtual school, right? We're still having discussions about whether to open that virtual school or not, correct?
That is along the same lines of what my question was, is, well, we're, I forget the wording, but we'd be a closed district. However, for the virtual school, can we be an open district to students outside?
And I'm going to get a confirmation, but I believe, yes, that's accurate. You could decide to do that. I don't know if we'd be, because it's coming quickly for the fall, that we would have enough time to get it all done. We could, we could, through the committee, if we wanted to discuss it. But I know Ms. Peterson was planning to come to the policy committee at one point, but then we canceled them, if you remember, because of the bond meetings, we had the study session. But it's definitely a possibility. And I think, I think, oh, Dr. Chokel did confirm it was legal, so we can do that. She's nodding. So that we can do that if the board chose to do that.
Trustee Barry? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I was just going to have the same follow-up, because the motion or the recommended action here includes the programs. So I read it somewhere where it says, maybe it's in the background information, where it says Dearborn Schools and its programs, and I have virtual school as a program. So in this motion, are we, by default, voting to close the virtual school as well?
Right. Would we need to amend action item 19 to make sure that the virtual school was open to non-district residents?
Well, we haven't made that decision, but I'm saying, should we exclude that from this motion? See, it's still not open. It's, is it open or not? I don't know. It's closed right now.
It's closed right now.
It's closed. Only Dearborn, so for viewers, only Dearborn students who live in Dearborn, or you have to live in Dearborn to come and attend Dearborn.
Or that small section of Dearborn Heights.
And small section, yeah. We don't want to forget. That place has been forgotten a few times. That place in Dearborn Heights also. If you are in Dearborn Schools District, and trustee Barry is in this business, he knows that well, a lot of.
You said the right school, Dearborn School District.
Dearborn School District. Parents can send their kids to Dearborn Schools. If you're outside, you cannot attend our schools, nor you can currently attend the virtual program. So we're asking about the, just for virtual program, because it's a possibility that it is going to bring in more revenue to our district, but it needs a lot of planning, and it needs a lot of studying. And I believe we discussed that in the finance committee, but I don't want to steal trustee Petrikov's thunder.
Well, we just opened up the potential to have the, start the conversation.
So I just want to make sure that in this, we're not making it for good. This is not set in stone, that we can revisit this and reopen it for virtual.
It's an annual.
I know, even this year. That's what I'm saying. Is that possibility that we can amend this motion then, right now?
Do you think it would be possible that we'd be ready for open enrollment in the fall?
I can't say right now for 100%, but we could work on it with Ms. Peterson and see if that's a possibility. I know she was planning for it.
Then.
So I'd have to get back to you.
We just need an amendment, I would say, then.
Is the resolution time sensitive?
We can.
We have another meeting.
Yeah.
I have a three-part question before, let me just, if it's not time, I have an offering. Now, second question. Do I understand this right? The Dearborn Public Schools and the Virtual Academy are separate schools?
Virtual school.
Yeah. Virtual schools are separate schools?
The virtual school is officially a separate school registered by the state.
How would that fall under this resolution?
So. So right now, so if you look at it, the only exception is for employees, and that was a decision made by the board, not for the virtual, per se, but just for the district in general. So since it's one of our schools, it would fall into Dearborn.
So we did, we did discuss this in finance, because obviously we're looking for revenues.
Sure.
So what I'm going to offer, we probably need to table this.
Okay.
Until we hear from experts, but what I'm going to offer is, and kind of like speed things up, we can just look at the elementary level, because I know at the high school it's very complicated.
Sure.
Talk about sports, extracurricular activities, and same thing with the middle school. If we just move as fast as we can to open for elementary, that could be a possibility that we can create more revenue. What are your thoughts? I know we discussed this, and we said, let's wait and talk about it in an open board meeting.
Yeah, but I don't want to, I don't want to confuse, I want to move, we've got a motion on the table and everything. I don't want to confuse it with this one.
We might have to move this.
Yeah, well, if you tabled this, we can't discuss it anymore.
Today.
That's Robert's rule.
Today.
Today.
Yeah.
I didn't table yet.
Yeah, no, I'm, well, that's why I'm explaining.
Okay, so you get what I'm, Dr. Maliko, you see where I'm going with this? If we just move quickly, just for the elementary level, we get 100 kids, that's a, what is it, quick math, a million dollars? No?
Well, that would also mean more teachers, so it's not just revenue necessarily.
Okay. The accountant in the room always wins out this argument. But okay, is it, is it proper right now to table 19?
If we're, if we're not certain, I don't know that.
We don't want to limit ourselves.
Because how this reads, how this reads is that to determine annually whether they will open all or any of their school programs to students from other school districts within the intermediate school district attendance areas. So.
Any.
All or any kind of sounds.
If we're going to consider this, we can't box ourselves in, so.
Yeah, and so if we can, if we can exclude the virtual school in this, then we would want, we would want to table it.
Do we, can we amend the motion to pull number 19?
Oh, Dr. Chokel.
So some of the discussion would have to include if they are non-residents, and they, if the decision is made to open just the virtual school to non-residents, there would need to be some guidance that they cannot transfer into another school, if indeed that's what the board would like to do. But the guidance for that would have to be part, possibly, of that decision, so that parents of students who are non-residents who go to the virtual school can't then file a boundary line exemption to actually go to another school physically.
If we get there, that's a contract that will spell out what they can do, what they can't do, what's, you know, what's on there.
Yeah, there's just some steps that would have to be gone through.
If we go there. But I'm saying, that's why we're trying to do this, so we don't limit ourselves that, hey, you know, it's okay, just forget that idea for this year.
And then the question right now is, can we get all of that done for, because this is an annual.
I understand that.
Thing, so.
In a timely manner for the fall enrollment.
Yeah. That's why I offered.
Just the elementary.
Let's just look at Dr., who made the motion on this?
I made the motion, I believe.
I don't think this was.
I support it, I think.
This was part of the general motion.
Do you want to amend your motions to pull 19?
Is that how it would be, that we would pull?
You need to pull it first.
We'll pull 19.
And then we'll table it.
All right. So I would, I would amend the motion to also pull action item 19.
And I support that still, so, okay, good. Thank you.
Okay. And, I'm sorry, I lost our place. Where are we at now?
I don't think there was any other items.
Okay, then we have to go back to the ones that have been pulled. Is that right?
No, no, we have to vote.
This motion.
I'm sorry, it is a.
Okay.
Okay. May I have a roll call?
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Dambrojo?
Yes.
Trustee Moses?
Yes.
Trustee Petrikov?
Yeah.
Trustee Thor?
Yes.
Trustee Watts?
Yes.
President McDonald?
Madam President, I put a motion on the table to, table, you need to read.
Summary of what was approved.
I'm sorry.
Number.
I'm usually sleeping by now, so.
Sorry, number 19?
No, 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 you're reading the ones we just.
Summary of the ones that have been approved.
All right, apologies.
You want to exclude 21, 22?
Summary of agenda, agenda action items. Approval of, number one, approval of warrants. Number two, approval of an award to Frontline Technologies. Number three, approval of an award to Camp Invention. Number four, approval of an award to Great Lakes Environmental, Inc. Five to six, approval of change orders. Number seven, approval of an award to Next Gen and MIS Corporation. Number nine through 12, approval of non-instructional and instructional personnel items for P-12. Number 13, approval of financial statements. Number 14, approval of cooperative agreement with Wayne Westland School per board report 21 hyphen 132. Number 15, approval of executive session closed on Tuesday, June 14, 2022. Number 16, approval of 2022, 2023 Board of Education meeting per board report 21 hyphen 133. Number 17, approval of renewal of non-classified and non-instructional staff and exempt administrative secretaries at P-12 contracts. Number 18, approval of, approval of renewal exempt administrators' contracts. And number 20, approval of donations.
All right, now we go back to.
Correct, okay.
What was been, what has been pulled?
Number eight.
Eight, 21, and 22, is that correct?
And 19.
Let's get 19 out of the way. A motion on the table to table action item number 19.
I'll support it.
Motion by trustee Barry, supported by trustee Moses, to table item 19. Can I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Dambrojo?
Yes.
Trustee Moses?
Yes.
Trustee Petrikov?
Yeah.
Trustee Thor?
Yes.
Trustee Watts?
Yes.
President McDonald?
Yes. Okay, then we can go back to eight.
I'll have to make another motion to extend the meeting.
Oh, yes, we will.
Support.
Okay. Motion by trustee Moses, supported by trustee Barry. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Dambrojo?
Yes.
Trustee Moses?
Yes.
Trustee Petrikov?
No.
Yes.
Trustee Thor?
That will go on sound.
Trustee Watts?
Yes.
And President McDonald?
Yes.
All right. Number eight, obviously, we just heard from Mr. Salee that we're transitioning to have our own drivers, Dearborn School, Dearborn Schools drivers, to be doing students who are the most vulnerable. But I see this contract right now to say kind of the opposite, so I want to just make sure that we are careful on what we're saying to the public right now. So on this number eight, I know we're awarding ALC, who was the lowest bidder, in the estimated amount of $750,000 to provide sedan cab transportation for the remainder of the summer and also next calendar year, if that's what I'm understanding, correct?
Correct. This would be just for, we like to call it sedan, because it's not like your yellow cab. A lot of, a lot of people would recognize it as a cab. And this is for transportation, it'd be not a school bus. It'd be transportation our own school buses couldn't provide.
Right.
It's for what the students' needs are, and our IEP, 504 students, things like that.
Do we?
We didn't make a motion before you started talking.
Yeah, you have to make a motion before you can discuss.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to.
Well, you got to read it. Recommended action.
I.
Want me to do it? I'm sorry. Recommended action, move that the Board of Education authorize the administration to award ALC a contract in the estimated amount of 750,000 to provide sedan slash cab transportation needs during the remainder of the 2022 summer and the new 2022, 2023 school year.
So moved.
Support.
Okay, I've got a move by trustee Barry, support by trustee Watts.
Sorry for jumping on that too fast.
Okay, now.
Wait, now discussion, yeah.
Yeah, discussion, yes. Question now, do, do those students are, so we've heard a lot about our vendor and cameras, are those supplied with cameras?
The sedans aren't. The technology really isn't there to put cameras in a sedan, not like you would on a school bus, at least. They might be equipped with like a Ford.
Usually, those students, when they're transported, they're transported by themselves?
They can be, or they can be transported with two or three other students. It depends on the circumstance, the route to school they're going to. If it's a wheelchair lift, they wouldn't be able to transport as many students with. Some IEPs provide, this is, we would use these if the IP says they could only be transported by themselves. So it's all those scenarios, depending on the students' needs.
And ALC, this new company, I assume it is a new company?
They were a new company with us last year, and we're really happy with them. They provided some really good services. We got really good feedback from our families.
How confident are we with their review? Do we review this contract on an annual basis?
Annual basis, correct.
Okay, do we put anything in the, in the bus for parents to know if they feel, we want to prevent what happened from previous situations? So, does the company put any, any disclaimers, any contact of information? If a parent has a complaint about any of those drivers or any of that sort, how do they go through?
Right. A lot of our parents, they, they contact, they have a communication with the company and in conjunction with our transportation department.
But if there is a complaint, they come to us, though, first.
Correct.
And then we contact.
They can come to us, they can come to our special ed department. We like to have them come to anybody they feel comfortable, whether that be the teacher, the administrator, or our transportation department, whoever they have the best relationship from, we just want for them to come forward with the information.
Trustee Barry?
What was the original contract amount last year?
It went up a little bit. That's a good question, trustee Barry. Don't quote me on this, I think it was like in the 500-something range, but with the increase in the fuel prices and, more importantly, the demand. We want, we're, we look at what our needs were this last year, and we try to forecast out, there's a good chance we might not use all of that, but we want to try to forecast out our best budget of what we see our needs.
Do you review why the increase?
Right.
You're good with it?
Yeah, we talked with Mr. Wall about that, with, we negotiated, a lot of, you'll see, a lot of companies will put on fuel charges. Because we were the first district in Michigan, they've been around in other states, we were the first one in Michigan to take them on, they were happy with our relationship, and so instead of getting us a fuel charge, this was a lower way to go by just increasing it by a percentage.
Are they going to give us a commission if they pick up more business in Michigan?
I wish it worked that way.
I got to wake up.
We can negotiate that, and I can try to negotiate that in our contract.
One last question. ALC, do they provide services to other districts?
They started to. A lot of, I don't know what districts, but we've gotten reference calls from, don't quote me, I think Taylor, I think Northville, I've both responded to reference calls for. Now, whether they went with them, I'm not sure, but they are starting to pick up business in other school districts.
Mr. Wall, maybe you can help us with this question. When we were reviewing their contract, did we also do reference?
We did, yeah. We had to go out of state to get the reference calls, but we did at the time.
Okay, thank you.
No, you're welcome.
Any more questions? Can I have a roll call vote on number eight?
Eight.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Dambrojo?
Yes.
Trustee Moses?
Yes.
Trustee Petrikov?
Yes.
Trustee Thor?
Yes.
Thanks for answering for me.
Trustee Watts?
Yes.
President McDonald?
Yes. No. Pardon me. I think we're at 20, 21, is that correct?
Yeah.
I want to read the motion.
21. Recommended action, move that Lamis.
Where?
Thank you. Be appointed to executive director of student achievement at grade one, step nine of the Dearborn Schools exempt P-12 administrative salary schedule, 260 days effective June, July 1, 2022.
So moved?
Support.
Have a move by trustee Thor and support by trustee Watts. May I have a roll call vote?
Discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry, discussion.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm raising my hand just to.
Absolutely.
Thank you. So I just want to make sure that we discuss those two items. Can we discuss those two items? Because that's how I'll be voting myself. I mean, we can just discuss one at a time.
Well, one motion was made.
But probably 21 will have most of the discussions. So 22 will be an easy vote for me, at least, as of right now. I could be convinced otherwise. So I, from our last meeting, I know we have a lot of questions, and last meeting was very, very difficult for all of us, and I'm glad that we heard today's conversations about being united. So I want to quote our superintendent, Dr. Maliko, last meeting. He, when asked about, you know, that we're, this year we're foregoing, and I asked that question, how much money are we pretty much losing if this, if previous bond would fall off, and we don't do anything about it? And we received the answer. So Dr. Maliko said, we can go for a public bond or use general fund, and you have to replenish. What we have to do is for immediate needs is to pull it from other areas. We are people business, we have to be careful. We are a little overstaffed right now because of COVID, but we know that we will get retirements, we will do our best, so we do not have layoffs, but it means that we will be losing resources, positions to provide services. We will have to start to do that gradually, moving money from the general fund every year. So, and I end the quote of Dr. Maliko. That's word by word. So we have, again, major, major issues here with funding, and we're forecasting even bigger issues as far as budget shortfalls, and other districts are going to have the same problem. And actually, one district had a very accounting error that Mr. Wall knows about, and there are probably 14 millions in the negative, which is not a great thing to hear from a good district that I thought it was. So thank you, Mr. Wall, for keeping us safe and not having that huge clerical, what they said, clerical error. So as far as, I'll get to it, I know because we're running, it's going late. We have major issues in this issue. We have a lot of roofs that need to be fixed. I can go into specifics, but again, it's too late. We will have to be very cautious about how we spend money. That's why we got elected here. We got elected by the taxpayers of Dearborn of how we spend money. If we bond out, we will have to pay for it from the general fund. It's, there is no such a thing as free lunch in this country.[1550.44] country, somebody has to pay the bill, and if we're relying on taxpayers who have been overbidding by tax, by taxes in this city, it would be a shame on all of us that these folks who, who work so hard every single day, and they pay those taxes because they love Dearborn Schools, and they love Dearborn, and they love the diversity, even with our own issues, they still love this city, and they'll do anything for it to stay and raise generations to come. I'm not against these individuals that we're voting on today, in fact, I am a huge supporter of every staff member who takes the proper steps to be even state superintendent, if they would like to be, in fact, I would love to see us as a district encourage that, and I'm a huge supporter of Dr. Maliko's program of raising talent, those individuals have done the job, I think they're very qualified, but I'm not approving of the process how they got here, the process is flawed, it has been many times, multiple times, even on this table discussed and said that this problem needs to improve, the fact that we have five folks to be interviewed by parents for one position is a problem, the fact that we're asking and requiring staff members to record their names who are on those committees is another problem, and I've raised those concerns once and twice and three times, the fact that we're going to go into a huge budget shortfall next year is a huge problem, we're talking about cutting teachers, and we're talking about cutting very key positions that touch our classrooms, and, and here we are approving another executive director, and we've been called top heavy today, I suggested to Dr. Maliko that you could do this with two individuals, the executive director job, with the current ones that you have, you have amazing phenomenal leaders right now, and they could, they could take on the job, they've been trained, I think they could do it very well, well, it has been tried before, that's, I, I think, kind of the response that I would get, well, instead of just throwing money at it to fix it and getting more people, more bodies, we have to know why it didn't work before, so, I am sorry, those two positions don't need to be there, we could save the taxpayers more than, what is it, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, four hundred thousand dollars, by those two positions alone, they don't need to be refilled, one is an amazing elementary school principal, she's amazing at what she does, and I think she will get there to be an executive director, she's more than capable, another one whom I know very little of, but I've heard a lot of great things, and that's what this district does at its best, so, I'm asking my colleagues to review next years, to look into this next year, and to see what we can do, I know it's, a director of assessment is very important to some individuals, I think that's a very important position, but however, I believe we do a lot of assessments in this issue, and some assessments are not needed, and, again.
Why are you talking about assessments, round twenty-one?
I'm sorry, but, again, I said that this question is going to be on both the same, but.
You got to wait.
Yeah, I'll, I'll wait, but student achievement could be done by two, but we could save the taxpayers' money, thank you.
Trustee Petrichov?
Okay, some of your arguments kind of flawed here, number one, we as a board hire a superintendent to do a job, we don't manage how he does his job, his role is to set up his, the district personnel in the way that he thinks is going to be the most effective, we also don't get involved with the hiring process, he can hire, I don't care if he uses a Ouija board to choose the people he wants to hire, our job is to then evaluate his final choices and yea and nay them, but how he comes about to determine them, there are many districts that don't do anything but have a superintendent, and we did it for years, and an administrator.
I've got a.
Oh, we got a.
Yeah, call for an extension.
I'll forget all my thoughts.
Okay, we have Trustee Thorpe and Trustee Moses. Roll call.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Dan Brogio?
Yes.
Trustee Moses?
Yes.
Trustee Petrichov?
Yes.
Trustee Thor?
Yes.
Trustee Watts, yes, President McDonald?
Yes.
So, I'll wrap this up really quickly, we're stepping into his territory now by telling him how he can group hi, his management team, and how he can select who he, who he wants to hire, and I, for one, am not in favor of going down that path, you will, you will tie his hands and anybody else in the future by stepping into the management of this district, that's not what our role is as a board.
Trustee Thorpe?
I echo what Trustee Petrichov said, this is a discussion that I've had with Dr. Maliko previously, and it's, your hires are a direct reflection of you, and if they do not do well, then you have not done well selecting them, but until I see that happening, it's, it's the superintendent's job to, to place these positions.
Trustee Barry?
I agree with Trustee Petrichov's logic on this, the only problem I have is the process, I am voting no on twenty-one, nothing to do with the name mentioned, I think she's an amazing professional, she's done some great work for us, I don't want to get into the weeds with Dr. Maliko on this hiring process, but I have a problem with the committee work that we, we put together, it is not a policy, I've had a problem with this for the last seven, eight years, we have a reputation out there that we choose who we're going to pick before we even start the process, the problem there is human and financial resources wasted, on two different occasions, I've been part of the discussion on a decision that was made probably like seven years ago before your administration, Dr. Maliko, and Dr. Maliko, you and I have had many, many, many discussions on this, matter of fact, the most recent was three months ago, and I told you that, that's it, I'm not supporting any more of these, until we, we, we get to, get to it and make some changes, reputation out there internally is that we have, we, we already chose who we're going to put in that position before we even get started, okay, there was something that happened a couple of years ago, Dr. Maliko, where I reached out to you and gave you initials of an employee that was going to get a position before that position was even opened, I discussed that with you and another one of my colleagues, and fast forward, that's exactly what happened, we laughed about it, the only thing funny about that, that's not even funny, so, I have a problem with that, I, I've even as well said, hire, who are you going to hire? Bring us, bring us a name to prove, you know, these, the other thing is, you know, outside, I've had a lot of people reach out from the, out of the district, say, oh, I won't even apply, some good talents, so I won't even apply, yes, I would always support internal candidate if it's close call, but sometimes it's okay to look outside the district and get some fresh blood or some fresh ideas, whatever, there's some great people out there, we have a good example in the room right now, they came from outside the district that's doing amazing things, we all probably can agree that that person is doing some amazing things, so, I just wanted to make it very clear, I'm voting no with an explanation.
Trustee Watts?
I think I echo what many of my colleagues have said, that our role is not HR, our role is not to select our candidate, and we leave our trust with Dr. Maliko, that is for him to decide, and we're not supposed to be getting involved in the weeds and micromanaging.
I had a conversation with Dr. Maliko today, and one of the things that I would like to say, and I can formally ask for it at the end of the meeting, but we already talked about this, is to, hopefully next month, if we can get it together, have a presentation, a report on what other districts are doing, we've been having some of that information sent to us in board briefs, what other districts are doing, have the conversation about that, and then decide from there what we want the process to be, because saying, I just, I can't vote in on the, on basis of the process, will just, won't get us anywhere, so we have to do something to fix that, change the process, we'll come to some kind of agreement, so that won't be a bone of contention anymore.
I, I just, I, I agree with you, I'm, I should not be stepping on this, I'm not stepping, in fact, I am, I've talked to my, to my superintendent a few times on those positions, I'm not here to make a judgment, if actually, in the initial recommendation, if it was just straight up, I want this individual to be in this position, although, yes, you don't have to make a hoopla and a committee and waste people's time, twelve o'clock, you come twelve o'clock, and you have the parent stay there for three hours interviewing candidates who are not even going to be there, but they're there for a reason, they're there to dilute votes, numbers, we make it work for that individual to.
But in the end, it's Dr. Maliko's final decision.
I'm speaking to Trustee Watts.
True, you are, but in the end, it's his decision.
Absolutely, it's his decision, and I do have the right to vote yes or no.
Sure, you do.
But I do have also the right to enlighten you, enlighten myself, enlighten my colleagues, hopefully, we can learn, and I'm not here saying those individuals are going to do a terrible job, in fact, I think Ms. Shurur is going to do amazing, since her name now is public, Ms. Hildani is going to do amazing at this job, I don't, I had this principal for five years, she was my son's principal, we had our differences, but I still respect that woman, I believe that woman would be an asset in this position, however, the situation says right now, we have a money problem, and if you're going to be cutting teachers next year, I'll remind you of those two committees, those two positions that, in my opinion, as a yes or no vote, I believe that we can do with the two that we currently have, I think they're more than capable of handling three high schools, they're, they're large numbers, they could do secondary and elementary, that's another model that was tried before, and I was not here when it was tried before, I was actually a student, but I think it, it did us well, it got us to the next level, there was another, another position called Associate Superintendent.
Okay, can I, can I pause, just because we're going to have this discussion when we bring this forward to.
Sure, yeah, but I'm, I'm glad that we're going to finally talk about the, this process.
We'll discuss it, hopefully next month, is what you said, most likely?
July, it'd be July.
July, okay.
July would be soon as we could.
Well, we'll do.
I just want to say one thing, though, I don't know why Trustee Moses keeps on saying, because you're saying this out to the audience, that we're going to be getting rid of teachers next year because of a budget shortfall, that's not true.
That's what we said last time.
That was not said, and that, that worries me that you're sending that message out there and, and alarming the community.
I'm sorry, it was, it was said last time by your superintendent, Trustee Petrichov.
He's, he, it was a hypothetical that he was talking about of when you asked what could happen, that, that's all hypothetical, we don't have a budget problem right now, we're just going to hear about our budget currently, and nobody has suggested that we were going to be getting rid of teachers at this point, to the expense of a director's position, I, I, I just, I do not want that message being placed out there and, and alarming people, when it's, when it, it was a hypothetical that, that a superintendent Maliko was discussing.
Okay, I think, I think we're ready.
Okay, may I have a vote on number nine, twenty-one? Roll call.
Trustee Barry?
No.
Trustee Dan Brogio?
Yes.
Trustee Moses?
No.
Trustee Petrichov?
Yes.
Trustee Thor?
Yes.
Trustee Watts, yes, President McDonald?
Yes. Okay, now, twenty-two?
I just, since the vote has been done, I just want to congratulate Ms. Shurur on being the ED, I hope that she does not take this personal whatsoever, I've, I've had a conversations with so many folks in the community who, when I ask them.
Trustee Moses, we're approaching midnight, can we please move it along?
But I'm, I'm just saying, congratulations to her, and I support this decision, right now that it has been made by this board.
Well, then I wish you would have voted yes.
Okay, twenty-two?
Um, apologies.
We stand by this decision.
Recommended action, move that Hilda Arani be appointed to Director of Assessment at Grade Two, Step Nine of the Dearborn Schools exempt P-12 Administrative Salary Schedule, two hundred and sixty days effective July first, two thousand twenty-two.
So moved.
Thorpe? I have a, a move by Trustee Thorpe, support by Trustee Petrichov, any discussion? I don't see any, may I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Barry? Trustee Dan Brogio?
Yes.
Trustee Moses?
No.
Trustee Petrichov?
Yes.
Trustee Thor?
Yes.
Trustee Watts, yes, President McDonald?